Good evening, everyone. We'll call a meeting to order. Joey, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to our first meeting of 2015 and wish everyone a Happy New Year. This will start by asking if there are any changes or additions to this evening's agenda. And we'll move on to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from the December 15th council meeting. We have a resolution approving employment at Park and Rec. A resolution approving an interim superintendent for the water department. Also approval of 2015 mobile home licenses. One liquor license approval for Dollar General Store. And approval of claims in the amount of $694,550.61. Any questions regarding those items?
Quick question about the superintendent for water department. What's the plan on that? What's the schedule?
Steve Reddinger, I, Joy, Melanie sat down the other day with him. Steve has essentially assumed the position of superintendent at this point in time. He is not the official superintendent. We are still going to go through the application process and interviews. But we are projecting that that will be in March. Since Steve is tasked with doing all of the budget for this coming year, which is something that he has never done, and he will be tasked with signing reports that he has not been responsible for in the past, that's why it was recommended that he be increased by a dollar and a quarter an hour. That money will come from salary savings from Carl, who is in the middle of his tenure this year as superintendent and has retired. So there is money to do that within the budget. We hope that with Mike onboard, our new administrator, that we'll have some assistance through him for hiring a new superintendent for the water plant.
Thanks.
I have one question also, but mine's on the trailer park licenses to Chief Fawn. Are there any regular complaints on any of those parks right now?
Nothing right now.
Okay.
They're usually less in the wintertime. I have not received anything.
Thanks, Joey. Anything else? If not, please call the roll.
Well, I think they've been moved in.
What's that? I'm sorry, yeah.
I would make a motion to approve.
To approve. Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
We were taking questions when we were in that discussion. Second by Flornoy?
No, yeah, whatever.
Please call the roll.
No, it's me, actually.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move on to our public appearances. Is Sherri Klender here? Sherri, can you come up to the podium and tell us about your concern?
Hello, everyone. My name is Sherri Klender. And I had a concern last week with the snowstorm. I live over on Glenview Circle. And of course, Michael and Jessica have already had this whole discussion with me on Facebook. I got stuck going down the hill on Park Street. And it was pretty bad. It was, the streets were not, had not been plowed. And I had come from open space to home. None of the streets, from open space to my house. One mile, 72.72, had not been plowed. To me, it did not look like it they had been plowed. I have a relatively new car. It wasn't that my car was not sufficient to handle it. There was several people in that area having trouble. So my concern is, in looking on the website for the city or the street department, is what is the policy on having plows out during a snowstorm when really it's a safety hazard when they're not, when they're not touched? You know, that's the corner of Park and Fillmore, two major hills. There was people who could not get up either one of them. Been getting stuck down at the bottom. There was one time I was almost hit. Luckily, I don't, I didn't catch his last name, Rusty, on the police department. He is a lifesaver. I love him. You know, he needs a raise.
This is where I'd audience be discussing that with.
Yes. So, no, he was, you know, he was helping several people in that situation. And he even questioned why that had not been plowed. Because it was, it was very, it was very dangerous. I come from a family of law enforcement. You know, I know what it's like when law enforcement or emergency vehicles are trying to get out to help people. And that was, it was very treacherous. Now granted, it was extenuating circumstances. I understand that it was probably more snow than what we were expecting. But on the website, it looks like they're, according to what it says, they should be out starting at 5:00 AM in the morning, quitting around 10:00 PM. Our roads at night were, our roads were not even touched until 7:30 the next morning. And I understand Glenview Circle not getting a lot of attention. I absolutely understand there's not that many residents on that street. But Park and Fillmore are one of the major thoroughfares through town on the east side. Even Burlington, around Sunny Brook, none of those were touched. And I just think I have a concern as a citizen on the safety. And what's the policy to have those streets done in a timely manner? I've lived in several communities in this town. I love living in Fairfield. I think it's a wonderful community. I've gotten involved. I, my husband and I really appreciate this community and what it brings. And we plan on spending the rest of our careers here. I just want to feel safe in a snowstorm. And I didn't last Monday. In the communities I've lived in, I went through and called them, asked, you know, found out their population, what's their policy? And most of them will work through the night to get it done. I'm not saying that's what we have to do. But I just think, you know, a lot of these are smaller towns. Iowa Falls, Manchester, Forest City, Indianola was bigger. Old Seal is where I grew up. And all of them have this policy where they, they take the time, they pull from other departments. I'm not saying we have to do that. I just don't know what we do. So if someone could share that with me, I'd really appreciate it.
Great. Thanks, Sherri. We appreciate it. And we're sorry for the inconvenience. We thought it would be a good time to ask our street superintendent, Darryl Biscard, to address what his plan of attack is when we get this kind of a snowstorm. And he'll do that for us now. And, you know, I think I would start off by saying that, you know, the challenge, obviously, that we have is personnel and equipment and how that time is managed. So sometimes it will boil down to that. But there is a strategy to how they do it. So go ahead, Darryl.
Yeah, we would like to have a set policy sometimes. And then, but during the timing of the storm is what's key in these types of things. Now, like it says, we usually like to start at 5:00 and quit at 10:00. And during the night, we, there's not that much traffic out. When we do get started at 5:00 in the morning, which is what we have been doing here this year, is we'll have, our priority is 34 through town. Then after that, everybody's got a different route. We've got an east-west route. We've got a north-south route. We've got north of Burlington. And we've got seal coats, which we're just leaving pickup plows on, so we don't, any heavy equipment on those. And within barring breakdowns or something like that, we'll be done plowing the whole town in six hours. And then after that, we need to go back and sand the town. So like today, we got in at 5:00 o'clock this morning. We're plowing. By 10:30, we were sanding. And by 2:30, we were, we were done sanding. So that's the whole town right there. But we have no priority routes other than 34 through town.
Darryl, do you have a policy where you will, if the snowstorm starts in the middle of the day, are you out immediately? Or are you waiting for a certain amount of accumulation before you get the plows out?
It's usually around two inches. But if it starts and if it's going to be a heavy snow and it keeps on coming, there's no use putting sand down at that time because it just gets lost in the snow.
Right.
So, yes, there's been some surprise, not a lot of storm we've had, but some surprises. So it just, again, it just depends on the timing of the storm, what we do. It's my call. So, and I realize we can't get out everywhere at the same time.
Yeah, go ahead.
We're not a big enough town to, as far as I'm concerned, they have priorities. We have our hospital on Highway 1. So that's, that helps that. And if everybody can make it to 34, then that's done in a pretty timely fashion.
We don't have too, too many hills in town. But of those areas that we do, do you prioritize some of those? Because that's going to be the first place that there is going to be a problem?
No.
Okay.
Not unless we, you know, we might get a call from the police and we might do spot sanding, we call it. And we go out and do that. But most of the time when we start a route, we'll just finish the route.
Okay. And from the police side, if there is something that Sherri described, where there are several people having trouble in one area, can that be reported to the street department at that time?
It's usually reported to our dispatch center. We send an officer. And Darryl's crew is great about, within minutes of giving a call to a problem area, they'll get people out there immediately. So if we have an area that's popped up as a dangerous area, it's addressed quite quickly.
Okay. Thanks. You know, one of the things I'll mention also, and then, Darryl, if you would follow up. I think it's six years ago now when the bypass around Fairfield was opened and Fairfield took on the jurisdiction and responsibility for Highway 34 going through town. And that's about, is that about a four-mile stretch from?
Actually, 3.7 from Bovard Studio to.
Okay. So that, and that was prior to that estate highway. So that was an area that we didn't have to be concerned about, which is why Darryl was mentioning that they start with that at this point. What's, how much time do you put into that portion of the snow removal? Do you think, Darryl?
34?
Yeah, 34 alone of the six hours.
Well, when we first took it over, I'll just say this. I told people that we're not the State Department.
Right. We were not going to do it the way that they did it.
Clear.
Right.
But when we start from the shop, we'll send three trucks.
Okay.
And we'll send three trucks starting at 9th Street. We'll go all the way to Bovard Studio, turn around, go back through town, come back to 9th Street, and then people split up from there.
Okay.
So that period of time, it probably takes, I'm going to say, probably 20 minutes to get to town and back again.
Okay. Well, that's not bad. Less than I thought. So that's, okay. I guess that's, you know, is there anything that you can offer in terms of, in terms of how we might better deal with the situation specifically in that area town on Park?
I don't. I think we do a good job. And then I know, I know people are out and some people don't, some people don't like to leave early enough to have, if they have problems or something like that. I mean, there's been times where we've, well, I'll just say this. One year, there was so much snow that people couldn't get to the square. The square couldn't get done. We had 20-inch snow. And we, I prioritized as the rest of the town. And then we did the square.
Right.
Well, I've been coming in in the mornings with the guys, like at 5:00 this morning. They'll go do their routes. I'll come in at 5:00 and I'll push the square. With the new snow pusher that we have, trying to get it up into piles. So people can at least travel around the square. They might have to have some piles here and there. But I've been trying to, you know, come in and help, help at that situation, too.
I've noticed that. They've done a great job with that. I think overall, the department does a, does a very good job. I think these things sometimes are going to, are going to happen. But it might be something where, you know, you revisit the idea of routes in different areas where we might have problem hills. John?
I was just going to go back to Sherri. What time of day was it that you were, so the 5th was last Monday?
Yeah.
A week ago. And what time of day was it that you were, you haven't, you know, that you were experiencing?
6:00 in the evening.
6:00 in the evening? So, so once, once the snow is plowed for the day by 2:00, if there is already snow, if there's snow after that, it's not, it's not dealt with again until 5:00 in the next morning? Is that how it works?
Not necessarily. It just depends on how much snow there is. So I don't know. I don't remember the timing of the storm at that particular day.
It was done by 7:00 o'clock that night?
It was done snowing?
I think somewhere around that.
So, I mean, according to the website, you just still had three hours to be plowed, right?
Yeah, if, yeah, if that policy is something we specifically step by.
Do you ever call in other departments to help you?
Yes. In fact, when we have over three-inch snow, the water department will do the north side of town and do the alleys. And the wastewater treatment plant will do the south side of alleys. And then if we haul snow and we have to have more than one, then our other departments will help us out. And we've also had to hire ideal with loaders to come in and help us load the square.
Do you have enough equipment? I mean, do you feel like you have sufficient equipment? I mean?
Yes.
Is it just a matter, you know, a lot of smaller towns have quite a few people. I was just, I just didn't know what the size of your staff was.
Yes, we have, we have eight guys, including me. And we have five dump trucks, two pickup plows, an inloader, a motor grader.
So you actually have more staff than Indianola, which is a 15,000 population town.
I don't know what their staff is.
A lot.
Well, Darryl, thanks a lot. We appreciate the update on that. Next, Steve Beeman. Steve? From Collector Cars Unlimited?
Yes, excuse me. Steve Beeman with Collector Cars Unlimited. And I'm here to ask for use of the square again on September 20th for our 30, 33rd, I believe. 30 odd annual car show.
Over 30 years, yeah.
So we'd like the same, same setup we had last year.
Okay, very good. Well, this is obviously something that the community really enjoys. You get a great response from a lot of collectors around. And I entertain a motion, counsel, to approve the use of the square for Collector Cars Unlimited on September 20th.
Move to approve?
Moved by Ledger Kaelin.
Second.
Second by Hamilton.
Do we need to have a, do you want the same setup as last time? I mean, do we need to delineate what that is or something?
I don't think so.
Do we close any streets for you or?
We normally pick up a map from Darryl, if he's still here. And we get together with him and we'll turn in a map of where the barricades are and all that. I don't know if Harry will be dealing with you this year or not. If not, I will be.
But you don't fully close the street. You just close like one, one half of it or something?
Actually, no, they close. They close. They close the whole square. The difference, John, is it's a Sunday.
Correct.
So it's not, it hasn't been an issue. You know, some of the others, we have made limitations to. But on Sunday, there's not, no limitation there.
Okay. And it's about the only thing happening on the square Sunday morning, so. All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Happy afternoon to you.
You, too. Thank you. Okay. Next, counsel, we have several action items. Invite Melanie to begin by talking about the income survey with Pathfinders.
Need a bigger desk tonight. I sent this to Darren. Darren and I didn't have a chance to discuss it, discuss it ahead of time. So we may have a little bit of discussion here. So you're all aware that there are improvement, major improvements to the collector portions of the sanitary sewer, the main trunk line along the east side of town. And then ultimately someday, the west side of town. But in the plan of action that was presented at that time, it also included the department or the city doing additional removal of inflow and infiltration. They said this accounted for about 20% of the overflows. And in there, Sean had prioritized some service areas. There's 20-some service areas within the city. And Sean identified a couple of those. So this income survey is to do, well, to do the income surveys for a couple of those sub-areas. And instead of applying for CDBG for the main trunk line, this would be applying for CDBG for more of a localized improvement. It, the two areas that we're looking at would be drainage area 5, which is Fillmore Buchanan, area where the apartments are. And then also drainage area 11, which is north of Hy-Vee, north of the Law Center. There's a smaller subdivision southwest of Hy-Vee that would be included in all of that. So kind of more the north-central part of town are the two areas that we're looking at doing income surveys. And we feel like these are the best areas in town to meet the low and moderate income status, which is why we're focusing on those two areas rather than doing the whole town. A couple of years ago, maybe just a year ago, we tried to do a citywide income survey using city staff and mailed all the letters out and all that stuff. And Tina got that very well organized. And I think we got one, maybe 2% return. We got nowhere what needed. And we realized that, that with city staff, this is just something that the city can't take on to do all the follow-up phone calls. We know how much Adam worked to get the housing, the housing CDBG income survey. For this, we're looking at needing 340 units. So more than what Adam had, but less than a whole city income or a whole city survey. And we asked Pathfinders to provide with an hourly fee to do this work. And also asked if they would have time in the next couple of months to be able to do this work and follow up on all the income surveys. And this was the proposal that she gave us. At $50 an hour, there will be some houses that go very easily. There will be people who will voluntarily return the income survey. And then there will be some that you have to go door-to-door probably multiple times to get, which is why she gave us an hourly cost on that. Darren, did I cover everything since we didn't talk about it in the beginning?
And the amount of CDBG grant that we'd be applying for would be $500,000?
Yes.
Yeah, you covered it pretty well. There were some outlines from NITRA that said that it would average at about 15 minutes per household. So, you know, you get four an hour to do 350 of them the first time through. And of that, you'll get responses from probably 35% without having to go back a second time. You know, because somebody that's there will answer better than sending them a letter and hoping that they'll fill it out and mail it back to you. I think it's fairly reasonable. I would project that we could be in the neighborhood of no more than $5,000 for all of this. I think NITRA feels that same way. She did in one email.
That was, that was my projection, not hers.
Sorry, I got confused. I'll admit that. But, you know, this would come, this could come from our sanitary sewer budget in order to do this. And I do believe it's a way more efficient way of handling this than trying to do it with city staff.
Yeah, absolutely. And plus, the opportunity to get a $500,000 award towards our overall goals.
A lot of this, a lot of this work would be either the existing sewer main out in front or assistance for laterals that may be allowing a lot of water in, running from the house, which gives a benefit back to the person that owns the property from the standpoint that if they're in that lower income range, they may not have the $6,000 that it takes to put in a new drain from your house out to the main and the street. So that's kind of what we're trying to hope for.
Yeah, the timeline on this would be for her to do the income survey from now through March. And then depending on the results, if they're favorable, sewer committee, as well as Sean, developing the scope. A report gets written, submitted to the DNR. And then that report is used for the CDBG application in November, which then is notified the following year whether you, whether you get it. So we're, we're talking even a year before whether we know, whether we know the funding is available or not.
How confident are we this application would get accepted?
As far as income level or the project?
Just in general, like putting this $5,000 as an investment and proposal to get a grant. Are these grants generally given if we meet the requirements? Are they very competitive?
Matt Dillon sort of indicated to us that it's.
He's indicated to me a couple of times that he would like to see us do this in order to assist these homeowners in the lower income areas.
Matt Dillon is with.
Matt Bowman.
He's with Area 15.
Right.
And I think that, I think that he indicated that he's at, they're at about 100% with the communities that they're working with that are utilizing these funds.
And I don't, I don't know the last time Fairfield even applied for the grant. And so that also helps you when communities come back year after year applying for it. That lessens their chances.
Right. And the only substantial thing that we've asked for through this type is the facade restoration. You know, and, and that's not exactly the same type of pot. It's a different pot. But that's, that's going to go through the same.
Different agency making the decision on that, so it'll be fine.
Good, thanks.
So Darren, would you give us a motion to?
I would move that we approve this proposal.
Okay. Moved by Hamilton?
Second.
Second by Hallie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Next item, counsel, at our last meeting, we had, we were having a discussion with Tom McMahon and with Melanie regarding some of the budget items in the pool. We tabled the next action item, which was authorizing a change order and asked that we go and make sure everybody was on the same page with the construction budget. You know, I've asked Melanie to kind of report to us on a monthly basis where we are with the pool budget. So I think we'll, we'll use this as our baseline for, for tonight. Melanie, if you can report on the discussions that you had with the task force.
I'm going to let Michael start it off. He was at the meeting where, where this kind of came to conclusion. I'll answer any questions.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Melanie. Well, as Ed said, at the meeting, Tom McMahon expressed some concern on behalf of the task force, who has been working very hard to raise the funds to make these projects, this project possible. And there was a little discrepancy in understanding. Task force believed that any savings that came from the pool could then go towards the gym. And when these change orders came in, there was some alarm, we'll just put it that way. So we met and we hammered it out to come up with this budget. The column that says project costs, the preliminary and the pool, those are set numbers, right, Melanie? Those are real figures at this point?
Yes.
Okay. And then the gym are the engineers' estimates, for better, lack of a better term?
Carly Nelson's estimates.
Yeah, Carly Nelson's estimates. Now, the bids for the gym project will go out next week. And then a month after that, we'll have them. So if they come in favorably, as the pool did, then some of these change, not change orders, but these alternates can be put back. But the task force really needed to know, what are we looking at? What are the costs at this point? How much more do we need to raise to bring in some of these alternates? The main alternate that is currently not in this budget, that's very important to the task force, that may or may not be a deal breaker for some of the donors. So it may become a non-alternate, may become a necessity, are the clear story windows at 108,000. You see it underneath the line at the bottom. So that's the main focus for the task force, is raising additional funds if necessary. Again, we won't know if those funds need to be raised until the bids come back from the contractors. But they want to know, what would it take to make that happen? Because it may be very important for some of the big donors who made this, these, these new.
Well, facilities possible.
Sure. Where are the windows on here, Michael?
Go down to the bottom.
They're underneath the chart, John.
Oh, I see.
So you'll see that the, the project total is 8.814, 828. Now, I'm presuming that that's $70,000 less than what was budgeted. So your clear story is not in there of 108,000 because it doesn't fit. But you've got 70,000 towards that.
Exactly.
Yep.
So you need about another 30,000 or something. I wouldn't emphasize too much, Michael, on the donors pulling out because nobody can pull out at this point.
Oh, no. It's not about pulling out. It's about, it's about building it to their expectations.
I don't want to give anybody the wrong impression because.
No. But that's the concern Tom had, is the man who went and made those, those deals, quote unquote, that's paying for the majority of this project. I mean, it's over 4 million of the 8-point-something.
Right.
Privately funded. He just wanted to make sure.
Sure.
We are building what we told people we would build and that's.
But for right now, this is the budget where it sits right now. And as those bids go out and those numbers come back, then you get a fresh look at all of these areas. And if there's room in the budget to put in some of those bid alternates, then you put them in.
Yeah, and we're hoping that the gym goes back similar to the pool, where it came in so favorably, all the alternates went back in.
Right.
Except for these new ones that were, will be approving later, that came out of state requirements for bathrooms and that kind of thing.
And Doug, you had a question on the pool at the last meeting, and, and this kind of leads into the next, or is probably the explanation for the next item. Under the pool, there's line 12 and 12A. And those are contingency items. You total those two, those two values, you get 72,269. You, the change order that's the next item is roughly 60,000, which leaves you about 12,000, 11,000, 12,000 for additional contingency for the remainder of the pool project. And Burbach was at the meeting where Michael and Derek, myself, and Tom sat down to discuss these budgets, and he felt comfortable with that number, especially since 90% of the digging is completed at this point. So, he feels comfortable with having some contingency, or that amount of contingency left.
And that, this change order will be approving tonight, hopefully is the last one that the state would mandate. He also assured us of that. We're not gonna have any more surprises of requirements from the state.
On the pool?
On the pool, yes.
I have a question on the number, number 1A, the value engineering on the gym. What does that credit there?
So, the gym building, the 3, 3,879,429 number is for the gym, I'm not gonna say the gym of everyone's dreams, but the gym that everyone's agreed to with the windows and painting, the structure, all the way to the ceiling and landscaping, and what was kind of agreed on. Then during a task force meeting, they pulled out some of those items that were considered optional. I mean, trusses are not an optional thing in order to have a building. So, they pulled those out, and those were listed down below as the gym alternates.
So, that 217 is the gym alternates?
Most of it.
Most of it. There are some other ones that we just took completely out.
It was like painting above a certain height.
That's not listed here.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that is.
Yeah.
There was, yeah, there were some others that were just decided not necessary.
Accepted value engineering. So, we took out, these are extras that we took, the alternates plus some other stuff?
They, they were, they were actually in the bid alternates.
There we go.
But they're, they're just not being included as bid alternates at this point.
Yeah, one of them was, I, I think maybe in the bathroom, changing from CMU walls to stud walls, making some of the windows smaller in, in some of the office areas. I'm looking at some others. The big one, the big ones are listed as alternates. The small ones are, are smaller.
Okay.
You got it to my question. Thank you. Okay. Melanie, just one quick question. $12,000 is left in the contingency fund. When would that be released? At the end of the project, when it's been approved by the council?
Or if there would be an optional change order that the rec director would like to see added to the pool. But they would be really, if they're not spent on something, it'd be released at the end of the construction.
If you look down, the only alternate left for the pool are three 20-inch umbrella shade structures. Net total is 12,639. So, I'm not saying that's where those funds would go, but they might go there.
That is, that's where our rec director would like them to go.
That's where certain Derek Wolf cool might like them to go. It would just enhance the pool.
It would.
No shade. Because, you know, you don't want to get burned up here, John.
It would help me.
Okay. Any other questions for Melanie? Okay. Then entertain a motion approving this current budget for the pool recreation project.
So...
Move by Revolinsky.
Second.
Second by Hamas. Please call the roll.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hamas?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Ledger Kallen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next council, then, we are going to reconsider the change order that Melanie brought to us last month for a total of 60,348. Any explanation on, on that, Melanie? I think everybody remembers what it is that we're...
Yeah, if there's any particular questions, there are some adds and some deducts on this. The deducts mainly relate to the location of underground utilities, where we, where in our favor. And the major add item on this is 49,104, and that was for adding eight foot to the concession building that then becomes restrooms in order to meet the state requirements for the number of toilets.
And this is already included in the budget we just approved?
Yes, yep.
So, I move for approval.
Move by Revolinsky. Second by Hamas.
It's coming out of the contingency fund portion. Okay, 72,000 you just mentioned.
Right.
Comes out of that.
Right. Any other discussion? Now, please call the roll.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hamas?
Yes.
Ledger Kallen?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Melanie. Next council, we are gonna have just a special meeting a week from tonight at 7:00 PM. There'll just be two items on the agenda, and hopefully be a fairly quick meeting, but we do need to set special council meeting for January 19th. We will be taking the kind of final action to execute our borrowing for general obligation towards the pool, which is, the total will be 3.775 million. You're gonna deal with the other 25,000 that we discussed last time in, in your next action. But we will be setting the special council meeting to approve those bonds, and then also the public hearing for the proposed sale of Logan Apartments. So, an entertaining motion then to set the special meeting for January 19th.
So moved.
Move by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kallen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose the same sign? Thank you. Next council, we have, the next three items really involve what we discussed last time with allowing for the, the building structure for the rec center to be solar ready, and...
Are we skipping something here?
Okay. All right, fine. Yeah, all right. That's, yep, we'll set the public hearing for Logan. So, next item then, council, is to set a public hearing for the proposed sale of Logan Apartment Complex, and that would be on January 19th as well.
So moved.
Move by Flornoy, second by Revolinsky. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Yeah.
Aye.
You mentioned today about removing lots from the resolution.
You're gonna mention that. Thank you. So, council, on that, on the proposal, on the, I'm sorry, on the resolution, let's see, we'll go to, when the property is described, it includes the addition of lots four, five, and six, which are kind of an extension of the, of the Logan property. They are, you know, vacant city lots at this point in time. We are not intending to include those in the sale. The appraisal that we received was...
We've shown a revised resolution.
The appraisal that we had received was just for the building in the one lot, our, just lot three. So, our, our offer on the property is aware of that. John met with him today. That has been removed from the, from the offer document. Okay.
So, that's been, those have been... Accordingly?
Yeah, same price. It's, it's just the, pardon me. Yeah, it's, it's just, we are removing those lots four, five, and six.
So, it could then sell separately.
Right.
So, what I would ask is that we amend, Doug, if you would amend your motion to set the public hearing for the property excluding lots four, five, and six.
All right, I'll amend that. Motion.
Okay, motion by, John, would you accept that amendment?
That's, but isn't that, it's not through the special meeting. It's about the proposal.
Well, but this is, we're just, the description...
We're gonna deal at the special meeting. Okay, I second.
Okay. Second by Revolinsky. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign? Okay, thank you. Okay, council, next, Melanie, wanna come up and do it these? Also, we have...
So, the, the first item, the ratifying the public notice, due to one council meeting in December, we did not have a meeting to set the public hearing that you're about to have, which is your next item. So, this item is essentially setting the public hearing for the next item.
So, it's setting the public hearing.
It is legal, Doug. We, we got allers involved in this.
This is still for Logan Apartments?
No, no. This is, this is going to be setting a public hearing for the issuance of an additional amount of 25,000 to our borrowing. And as I was starting to say before I skipped over the last item, was that what we, what we're, what we're proposing based on the discussion we had with additional borrowing that would be tied to TIF revenue to make the, the building solar ready. And as you recall, we, we calculated about an additional 8,500 that, that it would cost us to accomplish the, the solar ready for the building. You know, our bonding attorney just recommended that we go with the round number of 25,000 easier for the banks to kind of comprehend what it was we were doing. If the, those additional revenues, as they're available, command, we can always put that towards the debt service. But we would be approving 25,000 opposed to 8,500 to accomplish that objective of the building being solar ready. So, this resolution that we're approving first is to ratify, confirm, and approve the notice of public meeting, and then we'll open the public hearing for our next item. So, right now, you're just approving this notice.
So...
Move by Revolinsky.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose the same sign? Okay, now that we're here, we'll open the public hearing for the issuance of an additional 25,000 in general obligation capital loan notes. Ask if there's anyone who would like to address council. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. And council, any questions? Ever clear with...
Sorry, Ed, I don't understand. I thought we just set a public hearing to do that for a future meeting?
And we're having a public hearing now. Melanie just said we were...
You're just trying to...
We're trying to stay in, in...
Whatever.
It's okay.
We're trying to stay in the timeframe to do all of our borrowing that was set up.
At one time, right, sure.
And we're, so this, which is what we're going to do at our next meeting.
We, we published...
Just one quick question.
Yeah, sure. We're not in a hurry.
We published a notice on December 31st.
So, we already had enough time on it?
Yes, yep.
Yeah, that's what you approved.
We already approved that.
Yeah.
The 25,000, that's restricted money. It's just for the solar project, right? It can't be used, redirected anywhere else, so...
Yeah, yeah, essentially, that's, it's, part of it is, yeah. Part of it is anyway. I mean, the 8,500 of it is.
But the extra money.
The extra money is...
We're just, we're borrowing more than we need.
We're borrowing. I mean, he's asking where, what's the restrictions on that money, if there's any? If there's none. No, you're going to receive the money. I don't think there, it isn't necessarily restricted. I mean, it is going to be tied to the TIF portion of the borrowing. But you, as I say, you can essentially receive the money, turn around and pay debt.
Or we could use it for something.
Or you could use it for something else. You don't have to do anything with it immediately.
Right.
You could also be, as we discussed, you know, additional contingency, but that's, that's a, that's a decision for another time. But yes, theoretically, theoretically, you can turn around, pay it back right away, or theoretically, you can hold on to it and redirect it. Yeah.
So, Ed, the 8,500 number seems low from what we discussed in December, wasn't it?
No, it was 20,000, but we had additional money already in that.
Okay, so that was the balance?
Yeah, we needed an additional of that 8,500 to secure that. And council indicated they voted that they were willing to, to fund that. But again, this, this amount is what we're going to borrow, and then we'll make a decision on it.
All right.
Okay, so then the next action would be to, so we've, we've closed the public hearing. If there isn't any other discussion, we'll move on to our resolution. And the resolution would be the institute proceeds to take additional action for the authorization of the loan agreement. So, we would then add that 25,000 to our borrowing. So, at next Monday's meeting, your total would be 3.775, where, you know, our original publication was for 3.750. So, this would be the addition that you would be authorizing.
So moved.
Move by Revolinsky.
Second.
Second by Hamas. Any other discussion?
I don't agree with borrowing more than what we need. That's my only comment.
Okay.
I don't either.
And we call the roll.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hamas?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hamilton?
No.
Ledger Kallen?
No.
Okay, the commission passes four to two. All right, thank you, council, and we'll move on to mayor's report. I do not have a list of board appointments for you this evening, so we'll possibly move that to our next meeting Monday. Blue Zone site visit, we are going to be having a team of evaluators in Fairfield on, full day on February 9th and half day on February 10th. And they are going to essentially be visiting all of the different sites that were certified during our Blue Zone certification process. And this is, this is the, the final step. This is their opportunity to come down and see what the restaurants and the grocery stores and the businesses and the workplaces have all accomplished. And as you know, a lot of work has really gone into this, and it's really kind of a celebratory time. It's not a, not necessarily a time to judge whether we've done well or not well. And it's an opportunity for us to show off the community in many other areas of wellness as well. So, there are a lot of activities that are being planned. There will be an introductory session at the civic center at 9:30 AM on the 9th, where we'll just give a community overview. From there, they'll move to Revelations in a number of different places throughout the day. That evening at 5:00 PM, there'll be a, an event, which is part of the Blue Zones recommendation, which is wine at 5:00. The great stress-reducing wine at 5:00. And that's gonna take place where, Michael? I've forgotten where.
Revelations.
At Revelations as well. I just, I bring this up because you're all invited to that event, and then also the morning event at 9:30, so that we can meet some of the folks that are gonna be here. There'll be people from Wellmark, Blue Cross, Blue Shield. There'll be people from Healthways. And gentleman that wrote the book Blue Zones, Dan Buettner, his brother, will be part of the ambassadors group that'll be here as well. After that is completed, it'll be about 30 days before it's announced that we've, you know, received the designation. So, I think it'll be, again, a good opportunity to showcase our community and something that people have worked very hard for over the last year and a half, and we're looking forward to this visit. The work session that we'd gone back and forth on on dates, it seems the most available for council members was the 24th. So, we will meet here at City Hall 9:00 AM for a work session. We're, we're going to have a number of various items on the agenda. For department heads, it's not necessarily going to be a department head review. There, there might be a couple of departments that we are gonna ask to participate for, for different reasons about planning and issues going forward. But we'll be in touch whether we're going to ask you to be a part of that or not.
And what, how will that go, Ed?
Noon.
Noon.
Yeah, 9:00 to noon. Okay. Scott, did you have a comment? Yes.
Melanie, you kinda caught me off guard with that question about the trailer parks. I do have one trailer park in town that I did receive a complaint on, on the roads. It's leisure living. It's all paved roads out there. Lady said that she has to actually drive off into the grass. I went out, drove through, took pictures, and I did write them a letter to let them know whether it's a UPM cold path... know whether it's a UPM cold patch for the winter, that something was going to have to be brought to me within the next month as far as a plan of action, because the roads out there are terrible.
Okay.
They are very bad.
Okay.
That was the only one that I received. Sorry about that.
All right, thank you, Scott. And finally, council, I just wanted to mention that I know most of you possibly saw in the newspaper last week and may have known Neil Doyle. Neil passed away, I think, a week ago Tuesday. Neil served on the city council for two terms through the mid-'90s, was a great city councilman and great community advocate, and he will be missed, but we wanted to pass on our condolences to the family and really appreciate Neil for all of the work that he did in the past for the city of Fairfield. That, that will move on to the committee and board reports, Ways and Means. John?
We did have a Ways and Means meeting right before the council meeting this evening, and we didn't decide or have any resolution, but we just did a kind of preliminary review where we're at with our budgeting process, where we're, you know, issues that, that are of interest to, to us all as we maybe had in, in the 15, 16 budget, and also talked a little bit about our visioning process to plan ahead for our January 24th work session, our goals. And so, I'm not going to present it, and right now, you can wait till then, but I did send already a report to Rebecca, so you can read that if you're interested.
All right, thank you, John, and thanks for bringing that up also. I would like to ask committee chairs to at least to have a discussion with your committee members, if not a meeting, prior to if there are any specific goals that you would like to recommend for the coming year for, for our work session. Okay? With that, then, we'll move to closed session, so at this time, entertain a motion to go into closed session for a discussion on priority real estate matters.
So, moved.
Moved by Ledger Kalin and second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose the same sign? Thank you.